Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the New London Select Board to order. It's November 30th, 2023. And the first item on our agenda is Wayne Morrell is here from Jones and Beach. And Bill, I think you're going to give us some background on this.
Thank you, Janet. I think I'm probably the one that's responsible for your being here, Wayne. As you may know, we've been looking for land for a police facility for quite a bit of time, and that drove me to say, what land does the town actually own now rather than having to acquire? And I came across, realized that we had this piece of land that was pretty substantial in size, not useful for police purposes, but perhaps for other purposes. And so I asked my colleagues if we could engage you to spend some time and look at this land and tell us whether either one of the two parcels might be useful for some purpose for the town, but not for, just to make sure the audience doesn't mistake what I just said, not for police. Okay? So, very interested in your report.
Sure. So, good evening, Wayne Morrell from Jones and Beach.
Got to go with the microphone.
You can either stand or sit, whichever you like.
So, good evening, members of the board. Wayne Morrell from Jones and Beach Engineers. So, Jones and Beach Engineers did an evaluation of the two pieces of property that the town owns. They're both on tax map 33, and one is lot 9, and one is 35. So you have two parcels in land. The first one, lot 9, is a tract of land that is right across from Little Sunapee Lake. It's up on the screen there. That piece of land is 99.9% wetlands. It is, there is no usable space on the piece of land. There is wetlands right up to the edge of the road. It's combined with a piece of property that is across the street, which is your beach area and your parking area. So really, you know, there is, other than parking along the side of the road, the only thing, that's really the only thing that that piece is useful for, unless the town wanted to engage and wanted to move forward with doing wetland permitting, either for a parking lot or something that's out there. But I want to make sure that the town understands that, you know, New Hampshire DES and the Army Corps require that you pay fees for any wetland impact, so you'd be paying fees to be able to do anything on that piece of property. So I don't think that's quite viable. So Kim, if you'd like to go to lot 35, which is the second lot, which is the, the, what they called like the old dump lot. So that lot, we actually went a little further with this lot because there's actually usable land on that piece of property. So you can see on the map, you have some large open areas. That piece of land was historically used for dumping back quite some years ago. You were actually still burning some debris out there. The records that our environmental scientists have, back in like the 60s, the town was actually burning some trash and different things out on that site. And a lot of that has been buried, and, and the town, over the years, stopped that kind of use of the property, and now it's basically used as your dump design for leafs, brush, some appliances are out there. But there is a lot of that subsurface material that is, over the years, that has been compacted. And subsurface-wise, there is unknown of what's underneath that ground. You do have significant amount of land there. There are, there is wetlands on ones, on the easterly side that you can see. I just want to make sure, the wetlands that are shown on these plans were done by a wetland scientist on an aerial interpretation. So they haven't been flagged, but to the, looking at those as from an aerial type of view, that's what we think is going to be wetlands. So if, if the town wanted to move forward with that, you'd probably have to get a wetland delineation done, figure, you know, do the boundary survey on that. We did find a lot of monuments on the piece of property, so, and the deed research for that piece of property is very well documented, so it's a piece of property that has a lot of history. One of the things, looking at the report, and I think the board got the Enviro North American Report, some of the things that you have out there right now is you have monitoring wells on that site. And some of the things that came up on those monitoring wells is you have some heavy metals on that site. Some of those metals being manganese, iron, a lot of things that would not tend to be for water source if you were trying to draw water out of that site. So, but it may be a good spot for, if you ever had to do water treatment or anything else, but drawing water out of that site could cause problems because you have high levels of, your levels in your monitoring wells are above drinking water levels currently on that site. So, so I wouldn't suggest that you move forward on trying to put town wells on that piece of property because you would have more, more treatment than what you probably wanted to do on that site. You know, but it does have a lot of opulence. It would be a significant piece. It sits right next to your, the precinct's water department right there. It may be a good spot for a water treatment plant if you wanted to draw water out of Little Sunapee, or if you wanted to try to add some more groundwater wells. But that would be a lot more testing that would probably have to be done by the town to be able to move that forward. But at this point, you know, it's a usable piece, and it, I think that it has a lot of value in that back piece, so.
So, so Wayne, I, four things I had thought of to ask you about that might be used. You've mentioned one is as water treatment as opposed to water drawing. The other three are possibility of ground-mounted solar facility. Third one would be some expansion of waste management activity. As you, you observe, we have our, sort of leaf and garden debris composting going on there, and we collect metal and then send it off elsewhere, and we have wood that we have compacted in one way or another. But at another part of town, we also collect household recycling, and we collect garbage composting materials. And so would this site be a usable place to do some of that activity? And last but not least, and don't laugh because somebody has asked this, could we put a dog park there? So there's four possibilities.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, right now, you currently have, it's being monitored by New Hampshire DES as a, a site that you're doing landfill type of activities out there. You're doing, you're, you're bringing brush, you're bringing different things there. So you have that currently as being regulated by New Hampshire DES. So if you wanted to expand that, that would be a pretty easy thing because you're already doing that as a use there. Solar, I think, is a really good spot. You know, there's not a lot of impact. You could actually design solar to even span over wetlands if you wanted to. So that's a really good site. That could be used for that. Dog park, you, it's a substantial amount of land. You could do a dog park, you could do multiple things out there. You would have to make sure, though, if you were going to have physical contact with animals or, or humans on that piece of property, you would want to make sure that the cer, anything on the surface would not affect any human life out there. You know, right now, you're using it as a dump, but you're not standing out there eight hours a day. You'd want to make sure that you had that, that soil tested to make sure it was safe to be on for large periods of time. The reason why I brought up a water treatment plant is the vicinity to your precinct, and you have a, Little Sunapee is right at the bottom of that hill. You have ability to, you haven't done any surface water testing of Little Sunapee to see if it meets drinking water quality. You have a lot of wells that are on that peninsula, that you have deep wells that you draw from, like Sunapee area, Little Sunapee area. So it may be a good spot to have a treatment facility because you have a water source very similar to Pleasant Lake where they, they draw out of there. It may be a possibility for you to be able to expand your water supply to the town by you doing that.
I should probably know, we have a separate entity that supplies the water to the town, and they actually are talking about one of the possibilities very preliminarily would be, to expand water capacity would be to take surface water from the, the lake and, and somehow process it. And of course, one of their questions is, where would they do it? Because the only land they have is where there are a couple of buildings are there, so.
Right.
So there's some people in the audience who know that's going on also, so I do mention it, but it's very preliminary, but it's interesting that you mentioned that it could be used for a treatment facility as part of a bigger plan for water capacity.
Yeah, I mean, where you, where you have the infrastructure for the water, the precinct right next door, and the town owns that land, I'm sure there, if you two could come together, you would have the facility right there that if a draw out of Little Sunapee could work, you could have that treatment facility right there, and it may be a good benefit for everybody in town.
And the dog park comment was somewhat, somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but there have been people that have asked if we should have a dog park in town, and so until I came, thought about this piece of land a couple of months ago, I hadn't really imagined where you could have a, a dog park, but that, that would probably be lower on my list than the other three things.
Yeah. No, I mean, you, you, it's a, it's a really nice-sized tract of land, and I think it has a lot of value to the town, unlike the lot number nine down below. I think that's a great piece that the town could put in conservation and, and have that preserved for a long period of time, but this piece, I think, adds value.
And I think we all three agree, we've got to continue to figure out how to make the best use we can of the assets that we have, so that, that's encouraging what you're telling us. What should we do next?
Yeah, so we outlined in our letter some of the things that we would suggest the town, if you wanted to do some more on that lot. One would be, you know, delineate the wetlands, doing some test pits to see what's there, and actually doing some better sample out of your wells for the different metals so that we would understand what is going on. Is there any surface that, problems that we would have? And if there are any areas that are, that had anything that was buried on the site that may, we may not want people on, we could identify those areas and sort of fence those areas off so that we stay off of those areas. So really, the next step is to do, advance a little bit more the detail of what you're seeing in that lot, and then maybe present it to the, the town and sit there and say, these are the subsurface conditions that you're having, this is what you're having for surface elevations, and then basically find out what the town really wants to do with this piece of land. You know, if you are going in the direction of a water treatment plant, I think the first step would be to maybe do some surface water, find out if the water that's in Little Sunapee is actually meets that drinking water quality, or can it be treated to the point that you guys could put a facility like that in town? Because I see that being a need for the town, and where everything sort of comes to that, that point, you know, I think it would be a, a big benefit, so. So we've been working with, with Kim and, and sort of outlining when, when the selectmen want a certain thing, we can outline the scope of the different things to make sure that the town knows exactly the testing and the results that, what you'll find when we get done. We use a company out of, out of all the New Hampshire environmental North American. They do, they're very good, whatever we tell them is the limit of what we want to do, that's all they do. So, you know, testing and making sure that it's a safe site, and then that way we can tell the town, this is probably the best uses for that. And if it comes out that you probably shouldn't be on there, then maybe solar is the best option for that piece of property. So I think we just need to advance some of the testing because a lot of this work was very preliminary, to be able to tell the town, yeah, this has viability, lot 9, there is no viability, so.
Wayne, in your experience, when those wells were put in off of Colby Point initially, residents on the lake were concerned that they would not be able to use the lake recreationally because of the wells. If you take surface water even to a treatment plant, does that impact the use of the lake? In your experience?
It all depends on, I know that there's probably motorboats and everything on Little Sunapee and everything, so it really comes down to where that draw for that water would be, and, and how much, how, how much would have to go into that treatment plant to be able to treat that water when it comes out of Little Sunapee. So it's really, until you actually know the water quality, I don't think that you could have, you need that, that information to be able to sit there and say, can we even make that work? Because I think the, if you put, if the, the idea was to go and put more wells and then bring it over to this piece of property for treatment, I think Ian calculated it out, it's over a mile and a half of water line that would have to be put in to be, bring it over here, so that may financially not even work right, right from the start.
Right.
So that's why we sort of said, well, an easy, an easy thing to do is test Lake Sunapee, find out if that's a viable solution, and then we're only 1,000 feet away from there. And does that really, can we make that work? So.
Thank you. BB, do you have any questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions for Wayne regarding this? No?
I just wanted to ask, how, how large is the, how large is this piece of land? How much of it is?
And how much do you believe is contaminated at the present time, and how much is clean at the present time, which wouldn't require?
So we, we don't, we don't know the, what's contaminated or anything, we just know what's coming out of the drinking, the, the monitoring wells that are on site, but the site itself is, I think it's 7.22?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half acres? So, and about an acre and a half of it is wetlands on that, that easterly side. So you've got, you probably have about six acres of usable land right there. We just don't know what's subsurface or what's on that, that surface.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. What is your pleasure? Do you want to make a, a recommendation to Wayne tonight, or do you all want to think about this a bit, what he said, and, and we could discuss it in another meeting?
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't want to make any decision tonight. I don't think there's an urgency, but I, I appreciate if, if you're talking to Kim about letting us know what a plan would be for next steps, so we have it, just, that's what I'm leaning.
I think it'd be useful if, if Wayne or Ian and Kim sat down and said, okay, here's, that's what we've been doing with this, with Jones and Beach and their various studies, here's the, the next piece will be, you know, this, this amount of money, and, you know, how long it would take, and whether the winter weather would impact it, and so on. I think this is a, an important project, but not one that's going to impact anything that we do in the next three or four months.
Yeah, I think what we can do is we'll look at the outline that we gave to the town for the next steps, and we can work with Kim to put what we think that those costs would be for the testing and everything, and then you can make a decision on what things that you'd like to do.
Okay.
And I, and I think that we're continuing to have these discussions with the water precinct also, and so, you know, I, I think your comments tonight need to be integrated into that, and it just so happens they're going to be, I believe, on our agenda for our next meeting.
Are they?
I think, I'm looking, I'm looking at one of you.
That's the plan.
Yes, yes. So that, that's nice, that's, that's nice, that's nice timing in, in that regard, but, you know, it doesn't have the urgency that we're going to go to town meeting with anything this, this year, so.
Yeah.
Keep the ball rolling. We also need to get our energy committee engaged in terms of what they might think of that as a solar site and so on.
Right, yeah.
No, I think it's really important that the town understands what's on this ground and what's underneath the ground on this site before you go saying, yeah, we're going to do this with it.
Right, yeah.
Because I, I would hate to see you go too far, and let's do some preliminary testing and make sure that we know what's there and make good decisions, so.
Steve, did you have a comment?
Steve Ansign, this, this is just color commentary. The entrance to the dump road used to be down by where the culvert comes out, you know, onto the, onto the lake. And so it wove around in front of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and then up the hill to the dump. And anything and everything that people did not want back then is, is in that dump.
Yeah.
And I probably participated in some of that. In fact, years ago, there was, there was a, an airplane on the field behind Colby Jr. that then was dragged over into the parking area where, and it was at, sat at the end of that parking area, and pieces of that are in the dump. People, old gas cans, things that people just wanted to get rid of, wound up there. Some of it burned, some of it couldn't burn because of what it was. And, and in fact, a little facetiously, but when your father-in-law, Bill, was unable to, or didn't want something that was going by on the street in front of Kitter Garage that he didn't want to stop going to the dump, it went there too. Fortunately, he, fortunately, he got the old telephone booth, and he got the switchboard and all of those things for the ice house, plug for the ice house, and, but the stuff that's under there, scary.
Lots of stuff.
Very scary. And when the wind was blowing in the wrong direction, they were burning, my dad was really irritated because it wafted over our cottage.
Your property, yeah.
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 Okay. So, anyway, you, there's, I mean, you've seen this, that's why those wells are there.
Well, thank you for that historical perspective.
And we didn't, and we didn't, and we didn't know what it was that we were doing for the future.
Of course.
We were just getting rid of what we had, all of us.
Yeah, thank you. Well, Wayne, thank you.
Yep.
Well, Kim will be in touch, and we'll go forward, so this was very illuminating. At least we know what we can't do.
Yeah.
Which is always important.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. With regard to public comments, is there anyone here who would like to make a comment about anything that's not on our agenda? Nope, okay. Our next item is seasonal parking at Buckland and Elkins Beaches. We are holding this public hearing to get input from the public about whether we should make the restricted parking at the beaches as seasonal parking instead of year-round permit-only parking. So Kim, I think you're going to give us a little background on this one?
Yep. So, back in April, a resident approached the Board of Selectmen and asked that they consider changing the parking rules that we currently have, which are permit-only parking for the areas around Buckland and Elkins Beach. This resident stated that during the off-season, non-summer months, when the beaches are not used for swimming, it would be, it would be good to allow people to be able to use those areas so that they could park and walk around the lake, use the lakes for winter activities. Jamie Hess, and it was actually, the resident was Jamie Hess, and he couldn't be here tonight. I think some of the folks here that he has asked to attend are here, but I just want to summarize some of the comments he made by email in support of this request. The first thing he says is that many New Hampshire towns do have seasonal parking at various locations in their town. Some examples include June 15th to September 15th, or Memorial Day to Labor Day, or May to October. So some, those are some of the seasonal dates that he would recommend. He also points out that there are numerous types of outdoor activities in New London, and residents might like to engage in them by meeting out-of-town friends, and allowing parking would help facilitate that. Things like snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, ice skating, dog walking in the spring and fall. He also points out that it would be unfortunate to burden our police department with beach parking enforcement actions that are unnecessary in the off-season when the demand for beach parking is low to nonexistent. And finally, he points out that it would be a plus for New London to portray ourselves as a welcoming community. So Jamie Hess is in support of this request, and he asked the board to consider approving it.
Okay. Bill, do you have any comments you'd like to make? BB?
The, the only comment I have is when we, when Jamie was here before and we talked about it, we talked about posting signs, about, you know, go at your own risk, because Jay spoke a lot about thin ice and people going through the lake and things like that, so is there any, do we need to talk about that, about?
No, right now, we're only talking about parking. So this would, currently, there are signs up that say permit-only parking.
Okay.
It's true that we would have to clearly mark the signs for seasonal only, so if we, if you went with Memorial to Labor Day, or whatever it is, it would have to be marked. This wouldn't change any plowing. We don't currently plow Buckland, so that this would be no change in the operations that we do now. Currently, cars are allowed to park. Those cars have to have a sticker. If this is approved, New London cars with stickers would continue to be able to park, but there would also be the additional availability to cars without stickers.
Yep.
Bob Harrington did mention parking on the dump road can be problematic in the wintertime. But as I said, if we want to have winter rules, then we ought to enact them, because whether or not you agree to do this change tonight, there currently can be cars parked there, but they have stickers, New London stickers.
Okay. Does anyone in the public wish to make a comment about this? Steve?
Well, you just said that you wouldn't, you don't plow the lot now, and you wouldn't plow it in the future.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
This change would have, this change would allow non-stickered cars, but no change in plowing, no change.
Okay, so the cars can park there until there's too much snow for them to go in and out?
At, at the beach.
At the beach, Buckland.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And Buckland, or Elkins is plowed by the post office. I believe they plow the whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's currently already done by the post office.
Okay. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Sue Williamson, and my first time here. I'm now a resident of New London, but I've been coming here for about 35 years. And my husband's family lives on the lake, and my husband and I live a few doors down, and I've had the, really the joy and pleasure of now experiencing the lake year-round for the last three years. And what I notice, have noticed, is how many people come to the lake to, to walk the lake, to enjoy what's there, to meet neighbors, to meet new friends, and, and that happens, you know, well, really all year-round. It happens all winter as well.
Sue, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
Which lake are we talking about?
This is Pleasant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, because I know Sunapee is involved as well.
Yeah.
So my perspective is probably more.
From Pleasant, okay, with regard to Elkins.
Towards that. But good point, because people don't really walk around.
Little Sunapee.
Little Sunapee, and, and.
The big lake.
Some probably do, yeah. But in any case, so, so, so for me personally, I, I think there's a part of this for me that is, why wouldn't we keep it open for public? And there may be good reasons, but I don't, I don't, standing here now, sort of know what those are. And I have certainly found it to be building of community and neighborhood beyond Pleasant Lake, which I think is a wonderful thing.
Thank you. All right, anyone else would like to comment?
Hi, Sonia Gar, and I've been a resident here since 1991. And I also enjoy the winter activities, skating, walk my dogs around Little Lake Sunapee. And I also owned a business for 17 years here in town in New London, Art and Frame Gallery. And I would think that bringing more people to the area for businesses, restaurants, shops, would be much more friendlier to the community, to the community, and to bring more people to this area, which we, you know, it's hard in the wintertime to make money as it is if you have a small business. So why not bring more people and make it friendlier for out-of-towners to come? So that's my comment.
Thank you. All right, are we, are we all set? All right. Oh, Jay?
Jay Lyon, New London Fire Chief, not a resident, advocate of winter sports, whether it be skating, grew up on Big Lake Sunapee. I am in favor of having parking. I think it's wonderful as far as down near the beach. My only question would be, from a signage perspective, does it make sense to have maybe fish? fishing games, best practices? Because this is really a catalyst of, of the skating group, because certainly the people that are walking around Pleasant Lake, there's down near the dam that's open for non-residents, down near the lodge. So there's a bunch of different parking areas, and certainly, you know, the draw, I think I would agree with Sonia, and I hate to say it, maybe even, do, does the Select Board look at having non-resident people be able to use it all year long if you wanted to draw more people in, if that indeed's the, the goal? But I am, again, concerned, just to, to touch on what Bibi had said, as far as the skating aspect specifically, and I know that one doesn't necessarily have an issue with another, sorry. However, I think it's something to contemplate. And so I think from the town's perspective, if that's open and people are utilizing that for skating, which is awesome, certainly an advocate of, of that, but making sure that there's, there's depths as far as safe ice conditions may be posted, because we get calls all the time, all season long. In fact, Pleasant Lake, I don't think really froze ever. Last year was the first year ever with, with climate change. Big Lake Sunapee was the same. And so we're having more and more people go through the ice. So just a consideration, I'm not sure if it opens the town up for any liability, or do we post something, and by having posted signs saying skate at your own risk, or whatever the case is, does that, that help us from a legality standpoint?
Kim, thoughts on this?
No, again, if we haven't seen the need to put up signs to this point, I mean, people have been skating on these lakes for decades, I think. So, I mean, we are not encouraging people by allowing New London people to park or their friends to park. We're not encouraging unsafe behavior. I mean, you could say the same. I would like to have signs that have people walking around the lake wear bright-colored vests, because I worry that they're going to get hit. We don't increase our liability by allowing people to use our trails, walk on our roads. I do think it's a good idea for people to only skate when it's safe. And if we want to start a system where you can call a number, like when I was a kid, that's what we do. We would call a number, and they would say the ice is this thick, and we'd go on it or not. I think that's not a bad idea. But I want to make sure everyone understands, just because we open our trails and roads to parking, we're not inviting people to do unsafe things. We should help them. If we know that the ice is unsafe, maybe we ought to post a sign, I don't know. It's not a bad idea. But again, that would be something, you know, regardless of whether you allow this parking, you know, it's, New London people have been using it for decades and their friends. If we want to post signs, we should. But I don't think that we are inviting people to do unsafe things by plowing our roads and letting people park there.
Bill?
So what I would suggest we do is ask Kim and the staff to draft a proposed ordinance to allow seasonal parking between Labor Day and Memorial Day. Try it for a year and see, see how it goes. And then these other issues that Jay and Bibi are raising should be just done as the normal course of good practice, just like we say, there's no lifeguard on duty.
Right.
Yeah, we can put these, I mean, we can put signs up warning people, encouraging people to call for ice conditions anytime we want. That's, could be done anytime, and maybe should. Maybe there could be a recorded number or whatever.
Jay doesn't want to do that.
Right. See, that's what I mean.
We, we, we should absolutely not do that, because the conditions on Lake, Little Lake Sunapee may be conducive to skating or Otter Pond, but Big Lake Sunapee, Pleasant Lake are the two areas that are, that are, tend to be the most dangerous because of wind conditions, currents, you know, wind moving ice around or not moving around. So what, what fishing game would say is, all ice is considered dangerous, you know, make sure there's four inches of ice for people to skate on it, make sure there's six inches for bobhouses, eight inches for a vehicle, and so forth. So I think from a best practices, the state has the best practices, and that certainly makes sense.
So I would say go back to saying, let's put a parking ordinance in place and then continue to do, even without that, what we ought to be doing in terms of good practice.
So you're making a motion to allow seasonal parking based on an ordinance that Kim and the department heads will?
From Labor Day to Memorial Day.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we already have an ordinance, it's just going to be changed, you're going to change to that.
Change the timing, to the dates. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're good. Thank you. All right. Bond bank authorization. Now we get into really fun stuff.
Yeah, it's not too bad. Just lots of signing to do tonight. So I'll be asking for three resolutions in relation to our bond bank borrowings, and I'll go through each one individually, and then you, I guess if you can vote after each one to make it easier. The first one is on a post-issuance tax compliance policy. And it's, I'm looking for you guys to adopt a policy that formalizes the items that are agreed to each and every time that we go out to the bond bank. What this does is, we adopt it, and anytime that we go to the bond bank, it's just good practice that we have a policy in place. And basically, what you are agreeing to or understanding is the limitations of the bond bank and the tax-free borrowing that we're doing, such as we will only spend as appropriated, we'll understand the time constraints on the use of funds, you can't wait 10 years to spend them, appointing someone to oversee this compliance. And I recommend the finance officer do that, because they are closest with it, and they would know that we've spent the money, haven't spent the money, and make sure it's being done correctly. And what this also does is, when the IRS takes a look and makes sure that everything's being done in compliance, they like towns that have adopted a policy, and they don't look as harshly at them as if they, if they hadn't adopted. Doesn't mean you're not going to get audited, but it does mean that they look and go, okay, they understand the rules. So I've written on the memo, the motion, that would adopt this policy.
Okay. You've got it in front of you. Do I have a motion to accept what is printed before us?
I move the motion under number one on the document in front of us.
Go second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, and the second one is the Mascoma Bank Bond Anticipation Note documents. They're loan documents for the money from Mascoma, which will be repaid when the bond bank funds us in February. And I'm just asking you to approve the loan documents and then adopt their resolution of the governing board for the bond anticipation note, allowing us to borrow and pay back.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Okay, and last and certainly not least, the New Hampshire Bond Bank Loan Documents. They are all the loan documents for the money from the bond bank for Whipple Hall improvements. So I'm just asking you to approve those documents and to adopt the resolution regarding the authorization of bonds and approval of loan agreement.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. And I know you had to do a lot of research about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was illuminating, to say the least. All right. Okay. We're going to look at the revised library budget, and before we get into that, I just wanted to say, Crystal, I'm so disappointed you're leaving us. We've really, the town of New London has had a wonderful head of library, and it's going to be a great loss to the whole community. So we thank you for all you've done. Do you want to now talk about the library budget before you go?
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry. And I'm here through January 5th.
Right.
So I have a few more weeks. So after the meeting, was it October 27th, where we presented our initial budget, we got some feedback, we, the library, got some feedback from you, the Board of Selectmen, and the Library Board of Trustees considered that at their November 15th meeting, and voted to approve some revisions to the operating budget. Most of that is an adjustment to line 21 for compensation adjustment that was reduced by $30,000 to reflect a change of their strategy in addressing employee compensation, which they will divide over two years, hopefully. So, and that is looking to take a look at library wages and see, are they in line with where they, they should be for the cost of living and the, the types of jobs that we have. So that was most of that reduction. And then there were two other small changes to line 19 and line 20, just as we are looking to then go into a hiring process for a new director and what that adjustments might be, and being prepared for benefits and that sort of thing. So that was relatively minor part of the adjustment. So the budget memo that you have in front of you and the revised budget reflects those changes, and then the, in both the revenue and the expenditures for the, for the year, and the reduction in the revenue coming from the town appropriations specifically and entirely.
Okay. Thank you. Bill, do you have any questions? Bibi?
No.
Okay. Well, then, any questions from the public? If not, do I have a motion to approve the budget as it has been revised for the library?
I don't think we actually approve it. I, I send it along to the Budget Committee.
We just accepted, okay, and moved it along.
Accepted, send it along.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. All right. We were going to set the dates for the Selectmen's meetings, for December and January?
Yeah, I have some problems, and I'm going to guess that maybe from the conversation we have with Bibi before we start, she may have some problems too before we get going here.
No.
At least I do.
All right.
So I'm fine for our next meeting on the 14th, which would be the second Thursday in December. I am not here on the 28th. And then I'm, as you've known previously, I'm going to be away from the 5th of January to the 12th of, or 13th of January. And so I was wondering if you want to just, I don't know whether, typically, we don't have much going on between Christmas and New Year's anyway, so not too concerned about that meeting, but I was wondering if we wanted to slip a meeting in on the 4th of January. By that time, I think the Budget Committee will have done quite a bit of its work. And we're beginning to get into the calendar for things that have to get approved and so on, and maybe the 4th of January, and then maybe the 18th of January.
Okay. Is that good for you, Bibi?
Yes, so we're going to do December, right now, we're set with December 14th, so we'll just have one meeting in, in December.
Yeah.
But then on January 4th.
And then January 4th, and then January 18th.
Right. Okay. Does that sound good?
December, yep. I have a tentative January 4th plan, but it's not definite yet, and even if it is, I could probably, you could just have it without me, probably.
Similarly, you could do the 28th if you, if you wanted to have it, but I looked back over the previous years, and I don't recall that we ever did much.
Yeah.
On that week between Christmas and New Year's.
Right. I'll be meeting every week with the Budget Committee, so it's fine with me. December 14th, January 4th, and January 18th.
And Janet, this particularly applies to you, on the 9th of January, the Planning Board has tentatively indicated that date will be the date for, for a public hearings on the potential zoning amendments.
Okay.
And I would like to have you be able to take my place that day.
Sure. For Planning Board. Okay.
The 9th of, 9th of January was what the Planning Administrator mentioned the other night.
And what time were they meeting?
6:30.
6:30, okay. Sure.
And then also, I will not be here on the 6th of January, so I won't be able to attend the Citizens Committee that day. Well, on the schedule that was, on the last minutes, it was on there. Just, just to be clear with my plans or lack of plans, then I'll be back for the Planning Board schedule the rest of the winter season.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
So 14, 4, and 18.
14th, 4th, and 18th, right.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating me.
Okay. Thanks. Kim, do you want to give the Administrator Report, please?
We are working on replacing our AA in the Selectmen's Office. We've gotten several resumes and applications, so we're working on that, and working on restructuring things between that position and the land use and assessing coordinator, so I'll be back with more details on that. And tomorrow is the Employee Holiday Luncheon, and the Selectmen will be awarding longevity pins for employees from three, five years to 35 years. And I'm happy to say 18 employees will be given those longevity awards tomorrow by the three of you, so. And anybody who needs the town office or any office tomorrow, 12 to noon, the employees will be here partying, so please schedule accordingly. Thank you.
Bibi, did you want to give a Budget Report?
Yep. I have a few things.
Okay. Well, you can start wherever you want.
Monthly meeting for the tri-town watershed, we're going to add a fourth town. We're inviting Springfield to join in with us. We reviewed a checklist for erosion control best practices that a couple of the members have been working on, that I'll ship over to Adam and have him take a look at. And I just reported to them that we're going to wait and see on the Septic Coordinates to see how Newbury does. Kearsarch hired a new superintendent, John Forte, he started July 1st. He's going to move up here from Missouri. Three great candidates for Select. Oh, sorry. Three great candidates for superintendent, so School District is excited about that. Kim and I had a call yesterday for the Coalition Communities 2.0. I think you all saw the memo that Kim sent today about the two recent decisions out of the Superior Court on the school funding, so really enlightening call, and great group there to get, I mean, that will keep forging ahead to protect the communities from, you know, being able to hold on to their money. And Budget Committee, yep, had our first meeting last night. There was a lot of philosophical, good discussion, a lot of conversation around the master plan and, and priorities, and how that relates in with the budget prep. Great presentation from Bob Bowers about sidewalks, so some talk about future planning of how the sidewalks will be laid out and, and, you know, how the, the work hasn't been able to be done yet because of the water project and things like that. So that's about, I mean, Collins here, if he wants to add to it, but it was, it was just, it was a lot of just conversation, not getting into the details yet of the budget itself.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Bill?
So as was mentioned, so as was mentioned when we were talking with Jones and Beach people, the Water Department met again on the 20th of, Water Commissioners met on the 20th of this month with their engineer who was doing the work on the possibility of additional wells or surface water sources for future capacity. Really was more going over reports that they had received previously. The Commissioners asked a number of questions that don't, at this point, appear to be any great answers at all. Everything is either far away and would have extraordinary expense to get it pumped uphill to where the existing water system operates, or has issues, as we started to talk about with, with Wayne, about the ability to take things out of Little Lake Sunapee. So it was all very philosophical. The Water Commissioners will be with us at our next meeting, and I'm sure this will be part of what they'll want to talk to us about. I mentioned at our last meeting that there is a divergence of interest on their part in terms of how much capacity we need in the future. Some people feeling it's just to service the existing population, and others looking more forward to potential development within the precinct. They also discussed the mains again, and hopefully we'll hear more from them on that the 14th, but they also have another meeting on Monday, the 4th, and we'll see, they've been waiting for their engineer on that project to do a little bit more work and try to sharpen the pencil on what looks like an expensive project. They still hope to get started this spring. That will require them to get approval at their annual meeting, which is right after our annual meeting, and then to get. and then to get, um, uh, some bridge financing so that they can go to the bond bank next July. I think I mentioned that in our last meeting. All that's really very much up in the air at this point. So it'd be good to talk to them, and they want to talk to us, so that's good. Um, Planning Board, um, the property at four-thirty-one Shaker Street, uh, the farm there, uh, the, their amendment to their pre, previous site plan, uh, uh, was approved with a number of, um, conditions. I won't, unless somebody wants me to elaborate on them, they're posted with the decision on the website. A preliminary, uh, conceptual, um, presentation was made on changing the building at ninety-three Newport Road, which is where the current laundromat is, and turning it into a three-story building with, uh, commercial on the first floor, offices on the second floor, and residential on the third floor. This is in line with the Planning Board's, um, long-term view that we should have more, um, mixed zoning and mixed, uh, use of property. But that was just a conceptual, um, presentation. We've had the normal tree cutting, um, continued discussions about potential zoning amendments for the upcoming town meeting. And last, uh, two nights ago, um, Eversource came and discussed with us the, uh, replacement of five poles, um, on their right-of-way, uh, north of, um, north and east of Lake Shore Drive. A fairly routine presentation, um, that they had to make, and they go to the zoning board next week for their actual approval of the town. That's it.
I have a question. Uh, with the water precinct and their financing of the project, are they talking at all about trying to tap into any federal money in light of recent legislation that's passed at the federal level?
They, they, they say that they have tried all the different approaches they can. They were unable to get any of the New Hampshire, um, improvement money. I think I mentioned that at my last, from the last time we, we talked, that they applied for grants and did not receive them. They were way down the list, is the way, um, they, they put it. Um, they don't seem to be seeking any other sources at this point other than, um, debt. But again, we can ask them more about that, um, on the fourteenth.
Okay. All right. Um, the fire wards met last week, um, and Chief Lyon and other members of the Fire Department drove to Hamburg, am I saying it correctly, New York, to see the new fire truck. The chief showed pictures of the truck, and he noted the number of safety and user-friendly features this model will have. The hu, truck holds seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons, which is less than the previous truck. Is that, am I saying that correctly? But it's three to five times more effective.
Seven-gallon each, but with the compressed air foam system.
Okay. Um, the truck will be delivered to Albany, New York, in three weeks, and training will be given to the department members there. Um, the chief explained the run card, which dispatchers use for mutual aid. There have been eight-hundred-and-ten calls to date, down slightly from this time last year. Discussion followed regarding the recent wage study and membership demographics. That's all I have about the fire wards. We don't have any meeting minutes to approve. Um, we've already talked about upcoming meetings and the special events, which Friday the offices will be closed from noon to two tomorrow. I invite everyone to attend the winter gathering on December fifteenth at Colby Sawyer College in Wheeler Hall. And I would ask Bill and Bibi to consider topics that they think we should cover at that meeting, and share them with Kim, who can let us know. Um, and then also, what other items you may want to discuss for Saturday for the Citizens Meeting? Maybe let Kim know, and she can let Bibi know.
I'll do the same as I did last time.
Okay. All right.
It was great of our.
And do it again. Okay. Is, um, is there any other, any other issues? No? Oh, I'm sorry. We have signing stuff, but what about going in and on public? Okay. Um, we have a request to go into non-public, and, um, under RSA ninety-one-dash-A colon three-two, um, do you wish to do that?
Which is personal matters.
It, which is a personal matter. Bibi, yes?
So, yep.
Yes.
And Janet, yes. Okay. I would ask you all, um, if you're not part of this.
We will go back into public session to sign those things, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to go back into public session for that.